Okay.
So.
Then what time we start to vote for this meeting?
Um, it's so we close at four thirty and this event be from five thirty to seven.
Yeah, we think the doors open at five. I think we were back in maybe with maybe with the cafe open.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, and Chelsea did say the cafe would be open for the show participants and whoever shows up.
Any questions or comments? We have a motion and a second, all in favor, opposed. So we'll be open. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs.
Yes.
Um, the next, the item, um, we're gonna talk about the TCR sick leave policy review. And we have Justin Mall, who is on Zoom call to talk about this. Um, a month or two ago, six weeks ago, one of the staff members, um, it's brought to our attention that that our sick leave policy does not match the county's sick leave policy. And, and Justin and I hope will explain the differences in the policies that we have and how the county has. Um, and I think when you hear the explanation of the policy that we have and what it, what the county has, then you'll understand. We don't know why there's a difference. Uh, we noticed, uh, that there's a difference in several things with TCRS. Um.
And the county government.
Yeah.
Yes, a lot of discrepancies, yes.
And. Yeah. And and the sheriff's department is in the same boat.
And the school system is in the same boat.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
With benefits.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, Manny, what I give.
Thank you. For sure. Justin, can you hear us?
I can, yes.
Okay. Um, I like Stephanie said this was brought to our attention about six weeks ago from a, from a, or two months ago, from a staff member. And, um, there is a definitely a discrepancy in our department as well as sheriff's department, apparently also the school department when it comes to sick leave. Uh, so Justin, could you briefly talk about, you know, what we currently have and what the other departments minus school and and sheriff department have when it comes to sick leave?
Okay, so, uh, in in terms of sick leave for TCRS purposes, the lab, the public library there does not have the sick leave plan provision uh, within their TCRS plan. So essentially, that time unused sick leave is not allowed to be used towards TCRS service credit. Uh, so I'm not sure exactly what is done with it now. Uh, I just know that it doesn't come to us at the end. Uh, so it may be, you know, maybe paid out, it may just go away. I'm not sure exactly what what's happening with it currently, but I know that it doesn't come to us. Uh, and and with the county, uh, so the county government essentially has, and the school systems uh, have this as well, and a lot of local governments have it. Uh, they have the sick leave plan provision, which is the resolution that you all have with you tonight. Uh, so if you were to adopt this, essentially what happens is it allows your employees to be able to, when they go to retire, they can use unused sick leave towards their service retire or retirement credit in the in the TCRS system. So, uh, the way we calculate that is every twenty days of unused sick leave would give them one month of service credit added on at the end. Uh, and and even if, even if they did not retire, even if they just left, uh, you know, the Blount County Public Library and you all would indicate how many sick days they had, you know, leftover unused. Uh, and we would put that in their file for when they go to retire, uh, that it would then be applied to their retirement credit. So again, it's every twenty days of unused sick leave would equal one month of service credit. It is prorated as well. So let's just say, for instance, someone had sixty-three days of unused sick leave. They would get three months and three days of TCRS service credit added in, uh, when we do their calculation for for their retirement benefit.
And currently, yeah.
Good.
Let's go away here, how it how it works here. If someone left or were to retire, it just.
They lose them.
They, yeah, they lose it.
They don't, they don't, and and there's really no incentive for them not to use their sick leave. You know, they can call in sick leave. If they're gonna lose those days anyway, so that's, I don't know why that was originally done this way. I'm not sure. Now, the the school system.
Is a little iffy right now. There's a whole lot of things that are a little iffy right now.
I I know when when I retired from the school system, I had two hundred and something days, and that went toward that, um, service credit.
It also asks, depends on who you ask in the school system.
Yeah. But, um, I think Manny, what what we need to vote on this to approve this change, but that doesn't mean that it will actually get changed this year because what what the county wants to do is to hire an actuary.
Yes. So I got an email from Brian Baldwin, our, uh, chair, uh, our, uh, finance manager for the county, and he had mentioned that the sheriff's office is in the same boat as as us. So they do wanna hire an actuary, um, and, um, perform a study and then bring that to the budget committee um, in the near future, in the, in a few months, in a few months. So if you approve it tonight, they still have to go through their, their internal.
We don't actually have the resolution, do we?
No.
And until you have a number, I won't be here. This is right up my ballpark. Um, until you have a number or an estimate of what it may cost, how can you vote on it or, or, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
Do you want something that you want to have a number for what it may cost?
Well, it it's that, it's not gonna come out of our budget.
Not gonna out of your budget, it's not gonna, it's accounting.
Yeah, it will affect our budget.
The county.
It's the county budget. It's not coming out of your budget.
Yeah.
But doesn't the library budget have to support the
No.
TCR stuff, don't they pay into that like a premium for that?
When it comes to anything like this, it comes right through the county. So if if this will not affect our budget in any, not even a penny when it comes to if someone were to retire and they were given sick leave.
If it's TCRS, that's a Tennessee. So.
Right, but I thought for every employee you have with a premium or a cost that you contribute along the way.
Yeah, that's true.
To pay for their retirement plan, and I'm all for that. I'm going to pay, not pay for retirement plan. So, but and that also, that was a thing with full-time versus part-time employees. When you have all full-time employees, that expense goes up for the library. Yeah, so it was like, all right, you're gonna have a higher operating cost because you've got full-time employees and not part-time. So there's some expense associated with it. I don't know exactly how it works, and I'm not saying you shouldn't do it. I'm just saying it seems like you should have an idea of what that.
And that's what actually.
But that's what Brian, that's what Brian is planning to do. So we just need to say, yeah, we wanna jump on that bandwagon with the sheriff's department.
Yes.
And we wanna, the library wants to be included in that study.
Exactly.
So then when Brian, when they do all that study, then it will come back to us.
Yeah.
For the, yeah.
That's correct.
So this is just getting the ball.
Study, right. To join, join.
Study, yeah, that makes sense.
The resolution is for the study? When is the resolution?
I don't know.
Probably for the study.
Yeah.
Well.
Um, so.
Go ahead.
The resolution that we provided is to adopt the sick leave plan provision.
We don't have a copy of the resolution. I don't know how we vote on it.
Yeah.
Well, this is right now, I think we just, the board needs to vote on just participating in this study.
Yeah.
So if you say no, then we're not part of this and this, it won't move forward when it comes to our employees. I think like what Dawn said, if you vote now just to say, okay, we wanna be part of this study and I'll email Brian tomorrow morning and say the board voted to be to participate, just like the sheriff's office, then they'll move forward and do their due diligence.
So we're not voting on the resolution. That would be the next step after the study.
Yeah.
And they are, you have to contribute to the study financially.
I was gonna, someone has to pay the actuary.
We, I don't see us getting.
No.
Yeah.
I wouldn't think so. I mean, I think that it would kind of go along with that, um, what was the financial study they did, the group? The comp.
The work study.
Yeah.
Yeah, the comp, yeah.
The med. The compensation study, you know, the county just paid for that outright, and it included all the government offices. So I think that that would just kind of fall in with that too. I don't think it would cost us anything.
And if I did, I'd have to guess it wouldn't be more than five thousand. I would guess two or three. I don't even know.
I I wouldn't think they would expect the library to fund any of it.
So we just need a motion to agree to be part of?
Yes.
And and you, I'm I'm just to clarify for myself. Participation means we're sharing private data. That's like, what does participate exactly mean as far as that? We're turning over records or?
That's all the, the the finance handles all that. Yeah, we're just gonna be part of the study.
They have. Yeah.
CCS only emails.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Something else.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion that we, um, participate in the study with the sheriff's office?
Some moved.
Yeah, some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? What she carries.
And I'll update the board once I get information from them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Justin. We appreciate you.
All right, yes, thank you.
Meeting with us.
No problem.
Okay, uh, my report, the mom of that, mom of that one has been has been installed. Uh, Dee is out of the country, so as soon as she gets back in the country, uh, there will be a kickoff session scheduled and various groups invited. I think Manny said Blount Memorial Hospital, uh, we've got a group, uh, moms here that, uh, uh, participating and like that's already been used a few times.
Few times.
So, um, real excited about that. I don't know if you have had a chance to look, step in and look at it, but maybe on your way out, you can step in and look at it. That's all that I have to report.
A question on that. Is there, um, any mechanism for tracking stats for usage?
Yes, it is.
Excellent, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, Manny?
Okay, um, Youth Services, um, we're a couple of weeks away from Minicon. Uh, that is our annual comic con types conventions that's held for at the library. We expect a, uh, a plethora of people, uh, having fun that day. It's gonna be all a full-day event. I think we're talking a lot will be pretty cool. And that also coincides with Friends Book Sale as well, and the Friends, and I'm sure Laurie will talk about it, the Friends will have a tent um, as well that weekend during the book sale. So, um, I encourage you all, if you have any time on June the eighth to swing by the library and get your picture with maybe Batman or Darth Vader or whoever walks in the front door, um, dressed up. So looking forward to it. There'll be several food trucks. I think we're up to five now, five food trucks that will be uh, participating. And then also our summer reading program will be in full course and, um, by the time our next meeting occurs, which is great, the Chelsea and Youth Services has done a great job with some really cool programming. Uh, it's the, uh, children's section's gonna be a summer camp themed as well, and the employees are gonna be camp counselors. So I encourage you to come by and once everything is up and running, uh, during summer reading to just walk by the, walk through the children's department and, uh, just enjoy. I'm looking forward to it. Uh, reference, I just wanted to point out some of the programs that we had, and again, we've turned in some record type numbers. We had Homeschool 101, which was a big success. We also had our, now our annual sounds of spring concerts in, that occurred in April. And that was a great turnout, and it was just a lot of fun, and we plan on doing it again next year. We also had a hundred and fifty-five people attend for the, yeah, Focus on Senior Program, which was, uh, the topic was Will's Trust and Powers of Attorney, which is always a, uh, very hot topic and well-attended program annually. So we held that in the main gallery this time. Last year, we had it in one of our meeting rooms and it would, they were packed like sardines in there. So we had it up the main gallery area. We also continued with our Appalachian, Southern Appalachian series program. We had Amy Campbell here last week on her topic, Food Traditions of Southern Appalachia. She also recorded it as part of her podcast that she runs.
Yeah, you can, I.
Yeah.
Ask you a question. Going back to the reference updates.
Yeah.
There was a, a question about having a electric plug-in for electric vehicles in the library.
So I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought that up because that was a topic that Dee and I had a discussion about. Um, and that is in my long-range plan for actually next year, having availability here where someone could plug into their vehicle. Yes. I'm glad you, you saw that in the, in the report. Uh, let's see, we welcome a new member of our, uh, cafe, Tisha Chauncey. Uh, she has been excellent. She has done such a great job and fits right into this, um, dedicated group of, uh, employees that have this library is such a special place. Uh, Patron Services, if you hadn't gone by, you can see the new display. It's full of plants. Um, and I wanna thank the staff because they're the ones that are watering those plants correctly. So, yes. Um, before I get to PR, I just wanna mention a couple of other things under my update. Um, Chelsea Matheny and I met with Mo Click, and he is the new, um, admin of elections. So we just went over, this is a big election year. We have two more elections this year, so just kind of going over a game plan when it comes to early voting. Apparently, early voting at the mall on Saturdays will not happen. So it's gonna be happening here, so the library will have early voting now Monday through Saturday. Um, I met with the departments about long-range plans, and I shared with Stephanie, uh, some of their suggestions. They have some short-term solutions, and then they have some long-term solutions. And what I like to call like pie in the sky, but I like that. I like when people think outside the box, having a rooftop garden, having a shower, uh, jump for the staff, for the staff, a shower, uh, Jumbotron, uh, I call it Jumbotron. I don't know how else to, you know, with the football games, yeah, the big screens, um, an auditorium. Um, so it's been great. So I guess in the next couple of months, we'll have another meeting with our long-range plan and have all the suggestions that the departments had. Oh, bathrooms are included. Yes, we have bathrooms and an elevator. That that's a part of the package. Um, and I, I just wanted to, this is something I'm, I'm looking forward to, um, in the fall, and I'm gonna be coming to you, just a spoiler alert, I'm gonna be coming next month to open the library again during closed operational hours. Um, we are going to have, if approved that we can do this, a, in the fall, and it's not a night of a UT football game, a Taylor Swift silent disco DJ dance party here. So if silent disco, you wear the headphones, and we're gonna have three staff, we're gonna have three DJs, one will be a Taylor Swift channel, and the other two will be dance. So it's just something, again, thinking out of the box, and Chelsea will be open, serving drinks at the cafe, and it'll be like from six to eight. So that'll be coming next. So but just some, I think, fun and different that I think it, I think people have, um, have fun, yeah, so, um. I think Dolly Parton of, uh, of, I guess, our time. I'm watching what I say about Dolly Parton.
The dad.
Yeah.
Dad.
Yeah.
I know I'm gonna strike you down, we're safe.
I am. Yes, I know my limits when it comes to Dolly around here, so I, I try to stay in my lane. But, um, when it comes to Peyton Manning, though, I can't have the Tom Brady card, so I. Um, I am gonna turn it over at this point to, uh, Angenee, and she's gonna give updates on the PR side, and then um, her and I can speak about the budget.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
On the cake plates.
Yeah.
Talk about that for a minute?
Sure. Kathleen, do you wanna talk about the cake, the lemon cake plates?
Oh, the cake plates, sure thing. Uh, we were given several years ago a whole lot of cake pans, and we've slowly done things with them. And this year, Alicia, who newly in our department in the last year, has taken it on. We have a round, um, holder, and we have all the cake pans in bags, and people check them out. We have instructions. We have Batman and dinosaurs and Holly Hobbie and dogs and baseball bats, and we have about a hundred choices, and people can borrow them for two weeks. They have to come back, um, clean, there's no charge, and we're getting some takers, and the people that do think it's very fun. And so, I've had it.
Get cakes too.
People just need to know about it.
Do they do? I'm sorry?
They come back with cakes too?
Well, some of them have posted them on Facebook, but we've not gotten any fruits of their labor yet.
That's a great idea.
Um, so, uh, the PR team is, um, what is it, having, is going through a very exciting year. Um, what is it, as you all are aware, our branding project, we are in the final element of it, and that is our mascot. We have, um, started the, the, um, contest or poll, if you will, on helping, asking the community to help us name our mascot. If you haven't had the opportunity to cast your vote, please do. You can go to our social media, um, our Facebook page and find the post there. Um, it will be open and available to you, uh, until May seventeenth, this Friday at five PM. Right now, we've had twelve hundred and twenty-eight responses to date. So, uh, very exciting. Um, let's see, uh, and he is going, or he or she is going to be, uh, revealed at Minicon. So you'll get to, you'll get to see them there. Um, let's see, the the PR team is, um, wanting to create connections and provide opportunities both for ourselves and within the community by, um, exploring opportunities with the high school work-study programs. And so we are, um, putting out a job, um, internship, uh, opportunity. It's going to start in August if we have any takers. And, um, what we are hoping that this position will help us, it is not paid. Um, and it is a maximum, I think, of, uh, eighty hours over the semester. Um, and what we're hoping to develop is the creation of a community photo library. And so that means that when you start seeing Blount County Public Library promotions, you will start to see our faces, our communities' faces, and that's what the intent and purpose of this library is. Um, so we're excited about, uh, the possibilities, and then that'll just continue on and, uh, hopefully develop and grow as we move forward. Uh, it will also be extended to, so we're starting it with, um, the Merivale High School, but she is going to also share that information with the Blount County and the Alcoa High Schools in case there are students who are interested. Um, let's see, want to share with everyone that our Facebook page has now, um, now has over twelve thousand, six hundred followers. Um, yeah, uh, next time you see Beth Hall, give her a high five. Um, she has, she's made that happen, so we wanna say thanks to that. Um, and then, uh, just wanna give a shout out to Zoe Baloo, our online services coordinator. She has been working quietly in the background. Um, when she arrived, our website was, uh, just being, um, it was getting a new look to it. She's now in the back in tidying up the files. You might start seeing that, um, our language, um, will start to become more user-friendly and intuitive, and all of that is based on Zoe and the research that she is doing. So, um, the PR team is going gangbusters. I'm really, really proud. Um, that's it for PR. Any questions on that? As for the budget, um, what is it? You can see if you're looking at the budget that's in the budget packet, we are tracking very well with ninety-nine point three-two percent of our overall revenues in, um, to date. And that was as of April thirtieth. Uh, we still have, what is that, eight weeks left? Six, eight, yes, eight weeks, um, to, to bring in further incomes. Um, we are tracking very well. You may have noticed that the operating from last board packets numbers to, uh, this board packets numbers, the percentage has increased significantly. And that is noted at the very bottom where it says that ninety-nine thousand, five hundred thirty-seven dollars was, um, transferred from our budget over to general services as they do a great job of making sure this facility looks great. So that is, um, this fiscal year twenty-four budget. Um, any questions on that? Okay, then what I would like to share, and I think it was emailed out, um, yes?
Yesterday.
I also passed it out.
Okay, everybody has. Everyone should now have a, um, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, and it should say Board of Trustees Budget Presentation. That is the, uh, library's twenty twenty-five annual budget for personnel and for, um, operations. Um, the main takeaways are that, um, we didn't ask for any increases, uh, in personnel or operating this year. It does look like that the county has, um, because this budget has been approved by commission now. So we have something like a three point two-two percent increase in, um, our personnel. So everyone's got a cost of living raise, um, and I think, and then some, I think cost of living's not quite that high. And then what we've actually seen, if we're going year to year, is an increase of thirty-one thousand, one hundred dollars. So we're very happy with, um, the budget, and we feel we can meet all the initiatives and plans we've got moving forward. Any questions on that?
So budget was voted on by commission already? Yeah, I didn't think so.
Was it not? Sorry, did I? When does it?
In June.
In June. So apologies.
Okay, okay. So we don't know for sure.
No.
Did you tell me that it was approved?
Yeah, I.
Maybe, okay, maybe I misunderstood what she said.
Have you seen the budget?
Maybe the budget.
Oh, you have it?
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh.
Wow, okay.
Yeah.
No, it was June.
But you haven't even seen a proposal yet?
No.
Oh.
Okay, that was, um, then I stand corrected. So.
The only thing we've seen is the school system.
Yeah, okay. Ben, this is the projected budget.
Okay, okay. Yeah.
So let me ask a question. You did not ask for any additional maintenance dollars in this budget or any security budget?
No. No.
So I guess I'm, I'm a little confused on, you said there's a increase that was approved. Did we ask?
Scratch that, so.
At the proof of it, did we ask for the increase?
It's count, I think it's our county employees.
It's all county.
That's all, that's the board, not the school system.
But that was the only increase was personnel?
Yes.
Okay. But that's thirty-one thousand dollars.
So if you were looking at the total, so the, the very number at the. So if you were looking at the total, so the, the very number at the bottom, the two-point-eight-four-one, you see that number?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. That number is thirty-one thousand one hundred dollars higher than this year's budget.
I guess I just wanna see how that adds up with a three-point-two percent increase on personnel.
I'm not sure how to, we can talk about it offline, I can, I can just tell you what is.
It's not been agreed.
Yeah, this is the, the budget that was provided to me.
Yes.
Yesterday?
Yeah.
Yeah, yesterday. And so it is the first time that, that I have, that I have seen it. When we submit some, a budget over, all we have is the operation lines. And so then the county looks at the personnel lines to see what they can do. And I believe there was a misunderstanding on my part in that when I was told of this, I was told it was on the commission page and that it was approved. And so I misunderstood apparently what that meant, so.
I think that's fine, I guess if there is a three-point-two percent raise, I would think this number is gonna be much higher.
So.
If you do three-point-two percent times the number of employees we have, they weigh more than thirty thousand.
So, so that difference doesn't mean that it, it's. I.
Yeah.
You can take the salary cost multiple times one point oh three.
And what is that?
I don't know, it's not a salary cost, the, this plate has salary and benefits and you're not paying it on the benefits.
I was gonna say, it's not the benefits that you're, it's not all personnel.
I know, first I was like salary and benefits, but you're only just paying it on the salaries.
On the salaries, so it's actually, it's actually different. We, I, we can talk about it probably off.
Okay.
But yeah, I can, it's, it, when it's salaries, it's just the actual salary line, doesn't touch the benefits.
Yeah, same slow.
But I got the salary number.
The salaries.
Doing that all check.
Yeah.
I will, I will double check it.
So this budget will be voted in on our, I believe that is in June.
Any other questions? When is the budget workshop?
It's already happened.
That happened, right? And you guys didn't see?
I, I'm not part of budget.
You're not part of the budget workshop yet?
That's Brett, Taylor.
Yeah.
Hannah, the mayor.
Okay.
And Jared Anderson, they're the only ones that sit in on the budget.
And they bring a recommendation to the commission to vote in June.
But we, we don't ever see this. We see one line item, library.
Yeah.
Yeah, school system.
Yeah.
Usually we see a whole lot about the school system.
But I hear it's moving ourselves, but then you have to pay Medicare, it's hard to do that, so it's.
I, I'm still a little confused on this, so.
Hmm.
So you did not, if we get thirty-two thousand dollars, you didn't ask for any increases in anything, any area at all?
They told them not to.
Yeah, how does that?
Pretty clear.
Strict instructions from.
Yeah, so, yeah.
They're telling everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
They're telling every department.
Yeah.
You cannot ask for anything more.
They're actually asking to make cuts.
Let's, let's do some cuts.
That's what they're asking.
So if, if we do get the three-point-two-two, we feel very fortunate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be thankful.
Our.
Yeah.
Cause the schools are not gonna get that increase.
Well, we'll have to raise taxes.
I mean, that still doesn't mean that you can't. If they may not approve it, you certainly ask.
If they tell you, don't ask?
Yes.
You think about the relationship.
Yeah.
You've gotta, you've gotta think about.
Yeah.
Do you wanna keep that relationship with the county mayor and the county government? Or do you wanna poke the bear and make them angry? And poke the bear and make them angry, then they're gonna say, oh, sorry, Mr. Lee. You're gonna have to start cutting positions and don't poke the bear, leave the bear alone. That's my opinion.
Thank you, poke the bear, that's nice.
Right.
So, so if you're jaded, I don't think.
You don't.
If you have a comfortable with what you have, that's.
And, and if, if they're telling you that you, that your employees are getting a raise of three-point-two percent and, and, like, that's phenomenal.
Yeah, you'd be very fortunate.
I think so too.
That.
Very fortunate.
Yeah, that's why we're, we're, we're happy.
So everything else, much, much. This whole maintenance fees or anything else.
Maybe, maybe not this year, but it doesn't mean we can't.
Yeah.
Make an argument when there's an opportunity, but it's important to.
If you don't ask, so there's never.
But you also don't wanna poke the bear. I've been in municipalities for over twenty years and I know when the years you can poke the bear and then when there are years you wanna go get it.
I think there's a, there's a better way to say it. The budget is what it is from tax collection. And there's a lot of requests and growth and they're trying to accommodate all the different departments. And they shared, this is where we are and we're making, we're asking everyone to make cuts.
Yeah, the finance department wants every department of the county to be successful. And so when they're saying, don't make any requests, it's because they don't wanna have to say no. When there's an opportunity, they, they let you know. It's not them being any, they're very transparent and supportive of when, when there's a possibility for it. But when they say across the board, we're asking everyone not to do it for you then to go do it, it's not really being a team player.
I think right now, like, relationships are important to.
Yes.
With the library, being more integrated with the other county departments and, I'm sure resources a little bit. I think that's where we've got opportunities to be created.
Yeah.
As long as the relationship is going.
Always.
Right.
And we don't need to vote on this for anything.
No.
You know, maybe it's up for the record, he's to vote for it. Yeah.
I think so, I think it's not the.
Yeah, it's.
Well, we'll give you updates on the budget.
Thanks.
Yeah, this is still.
The projection.
We'll bring it to you in June after it's been approved.
They said we can't, that we can't approve it, and the commission has to, right?
That's, yeah, I mean, you could, but then you'd have to undo everything you did, so, and, and I apologize, I.
Every year, since I've been here, there's been, there's been a change um in the way things are, are done in the finance department. And we're team players, you know, we, we meet with them, we listen to them, uh, we take their advice. Every, every year it, it's tweaked a little because they're, they're still new to the game as well, so.
And they're implementing new systems and with those systems, new processes come into play. So, you know, I saw this yes, yesterday or the day of, yeah, what is today? Tuesday, so Monday, Monday is when, when I got this for the first time and saw all the numbers. And I misunderstood apparently, um, it was the budget committee who had looked at it and approved. And because it's at a different timeline, I made the assumption, so I do apologize and thank you.
Seems like we will approve this before you submit it to them, but.
That used to be the way it was. That is no longer the way that it is because new leadership pulls the personnel in. I used to do the personnel and I used to be able to tell you, this is the FICA percentage, this is the, those are shared, but we don't get those numbers. We can go on what the current year is, what I know people are getting paid. But then afterwards, it's, it's just a new process, so.
Are you suggesting that you would like to see the budget before it's presented to the commission?
I'm asking the question.
Yeah, I think it's a good question.
Yeah, it seems like, maybe, but, but I don't.
But if there's nothing in there, you don't know what their increases are, it doesn't matter.
If, if that was the case, then this would be your opportunity. You could look at this and you could vote on this. However, I don't know how that will affect the waters if we go and then tell the commission, well, this is the budget that the board's approved and they're like, well, we didn't approve that. And so we don't want to be perceived as, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I'm just talking about the possibilities because.
Like, like what Tim said about rebuilding relationships, I think we're on a good, good path right now and.
Yeah, it almost seems like with processes changing and everything, maybe, maybe next year, this timeframe, or earlier than this timeframe, we can get somebody from finance out here and talk to us um and kind of give us some prognostication. And I mean, just transparently, like, this is a year we can ask for something in the budget or some new item or security or those things.
That's a good idea.
Like, it almost seems like there's an opportunity there to, ahead of this, to get a little communication going.
Think my suggestion would be in the future before we present, and we, and we saw it, right? We saw the, the presentation of the budget before you guys went um to the commission, didn't we?
Last year.
Last year, yeah.
It seems like we as the board didn't know what budget was presented to commission.
It, like, we're trying to, things change every year and I'm trying to figure out.
So quickly, does it for next year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, all I ask in return is when we do present the budget, that the administration here really takes the time and effort to go over the operational line. We know what we're talking about when it comes to the operational personnel, they handle that. We don't even touch that anymore, that's, but when it comes to our numbers, we can back it up.
Yeah.
When it comes to operational.
So, so the, the process would be, yeah, that's, that's the only thing you could really weigh in on at that stage until.
I think it's good if the trustee, the commissioner comes and says, hey, we talked about your budget, it was this. And for us to say, okay, we knew this was coming and this is what we were asking for, just, you know, so we can be aware of it.
Thanks. We said we don't need to vote on this.
Uh, anything else Manny in your report?
I think that's it. All covered.
Uh, Bill Pope is out of the country, so we do not have a found out from report. Dee is out of the country, but we have a replacement for Dee.
No, no one can replace Dee.
I'm Marie Smalley though, and um G reached out to me and said, can you come and present to the board? And I said, sure. And then as the day was approaching, I thought, what am I gonna say? She didn't send me anything, so um I looked at a previous uh meetings minutes and just sort of thought I would hit the same thing. Um, we haven't had another book sale, we've got one coming up, the same weekend at Comic-Con this year. Um, so there's, there's nothing new to tell you about book sales. Our lobby sales and the bookstore sales, I mean, the store looks awesome all the time. If you walk by there, it looks really great, they tend to every single day, just about. And they, I, just off the top of my head, I'm gonna say they're making four times as much money as they were a couple years ago. Um, we've had a big donation recently from Alcoa Middle School. Um, so we're, we're working through that. eBay had another great month, a little over thirteen thousand dollars in April, that is, that's gross. And, and out of that comes all our shipping costs, which is running in the high twenty percents now. Um, let's see, for the uh Golden Anniversary, uh, we're gonna have the tent and that's gonna be used by the writer in residence and the Vietnam Voices kickoff on, I believe it's Friday night. And then the Friends are gonna have uh an anniversary celebration of sorts there on Saturday. Um, our writer in residence, Sherry, is going to be the MC for that. At current stage of planning, we've got a band lined up. Um, and the food trucks, the Friends have been sort of helping coordinate that. Um, we had our uh sparkling cider and cookies on, in April. And it was frankly a little disappointing, but uh, you know, it was, it was well attended by volunteers and library staff. So that's okay, we had fun. Um, do we have anything going on the parking? Cause everybody's all worried about parking, do we have shuttles and off-site location or any?
Yeah, during, and Beth does this, um, there will be a map that she creates on Facebook and other social media outlets.
We'll have a, we'll have a, a paper map, but we'll also be posting alternative parking um options near the library. Okay, um, and I think there's a meeting coming up for some of the Golden Anniversary Committee to meet with Manny. Um, my only thing would be, there are a lot of large purchases sometimes at the book sale. And we just need to keep that in mind. Um, let's see, um, we have decided on a menu and a place for the October celebration and we're gonna have a silent auction. There'll also be an online auction. Uh, we're having it out at Pelasippi, they're creating some mocktails for us. Um, the food's gonna be really good, I think. And uh because it's a learning experience for them, we don't have to pay for a place to have it, so it's super. Um, and let's see, we've, all of our new officers that we nominated have accepted. Um, Vandy Kim's gonna be coming back. Um, to return us, I don't know what, what position she held on the board before of the Friends, but she'll be the president. And I think that's all, but I'll answer questions to the best of my ability.
I don't have any questions?
Thank you, Marie, appreciate you.
Uh, Liz is not here, oh, oh, there she is. Liz is here, hi Liz.
Oh, well, this is serendipitous, you all, I had a lot of trouble logging in. I was trying at five-twenty and then I was like, I'm just gonna drive back to the regional office and I'll make it somehow, so perfect timing. Um, so uh I, I sent the report and the read statistics ahead of time, um, so you all can see those. We had our last regional in-service today at our office with Caitlin Haley and she provided training on um library marketing uh and social media, so that was really great. Uh, just wanted to highlight some workshops that um Tennessee State Library and archivists are providing um to currently practicing archivists or librarians um with archival or historic paper, paper materials in their collection. Uh, I thought that was a really great opportunity and a lot of our libraries enjoy that. We often have, I don't know, we have in the last year or two, had a regional in-service where we had some of the archivists come and um discuss the collections care basics about that and archival materials and um how to preserve those and, and keep those in the best condition possible. But these are some additional workshops that they are hosting, so just wanted to let our librarians know about that and any practicing archivists in the area know about that as well. Um, tech grant applications, we have a lot of deadlines coming up in the summer. I know this is a very busy time for our libraries with summer reading program and everything else going on. Um, but we also have some additional deadlines. With summer reading program and everything else going on, um, but we also have some additional deadlines. The tech grant deadline is June seventeenth this year. There's a little bit more in my report, kind of um expanding on tech grant. Um, and that opportunity there. Uh, as we all mentioned, you know, we have regional in-services and provide training materials. Because we require all paid staff at every level um to obtain a certain number of continuing education hours. And so those need to be completed by June the thirtieth, so the ending with the fiscal year. Um, we will be circulating uh the library service agreement again. Um, and I'll send that to you all. So that is coming around again. Uh, and then Title VI training for staff. Um, our libraries are sub recipients. This, we have done this the last two years. Um, I'm, I believe this will also be a requirement for this year as well. Um, our libraries receive and are sub recipients of federal funding through our office, and so all the staff there must complete Title VI training. The county may provide that for you all, and that's fine. If they do, that you can utilize that. Um, otherwise, I would expect us to be getting information very soon on the library list serve about um. The Title VI training that, that you can do through us if you need. And then, of course, the standards, we discuss a lot, uh, the library standards, the annual standard survey. Uh, deadline will be July fifteenth and that is open right now um for completion. That covers this uh current fiscal year as well. So, um, we're encouraging everyone to complete trustee certification if they have not. And we are looking forward to seeing all the fun things that you all are doing with summer reading program. Um, we were pleased to be able to um provide banners and posters and bookmarks and pencils, promotional reading mater-. Materials for the summer reading program um to all our libraries again this year, so. Think it's a fun theme. Adventure begins at your library. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Liz? Thank you, Liz. Thank you for attending.
Oh, you're welcome. I'm glad I could. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any committee updates on the board? As Manny mentioned, he has been working with staff about the long range planning and we, we really need to. Get back together in a, probably not next month, but maybe July or sometime soon. Uh, to look at what he has uh come back with so that we proceed on with that long range plan. Or short range plan, whatever it might be. Um, nominating committee appointments, Tim, you want to?
So we met just before this meeting, Tim, uh. As far as our nominations go, uh, we, we'd vote on them tonight or next month or, but for nominations, we're nominating in summer. Uh, once again, as our very able secretary.
Unless somebody else wants to nominate themselves.
And then we'll, we'll be nominating uh Stephanie as vice chair, um, and then Lauren as chair um for this coming year.
Do we vote on that today, tonight, or in June?
Do it in, yeah, do it in June.
Thank you, committee. Sorry.
And all of the nominations.
Alright, uh, next item on the agenda is the MOU with Bill Wider Blunt.
Yes. So this has been approved by the county attorney. Uh, his office has looked at it and approved it.
They did?
They did, yeah.
So do I have a motion to approve this MOU with Bill Wider Blunt?
I'm moved. Sorry.
Second, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any votes? Right on. The whole business, the trustee information sheet, uh, we do have one change, I think. Uh, some have thought about it uh before the meeting today. Uh, that we needed to add something at the bottom or somewhere just to indicate. Where this uh person is from, like if it's in the Marable City or. Could have two checks, cause they could be Marable City and Blunt County, but just to, to kind of clarify. Even though we can look them up by the way, there is, but still that just makes a lot.
I thought we had discussed this in the last meeting. There's, on that first page, we had, um, there's language here about application.
Yes.
Apply. I thought we had agreed to strike that.
Yes.
Cause it's not technically an application.
Yes.
Just an information packet.
Information.
That's at the bottom underneath roles and responsibilities for a board member. It's that paragraph below the bullets.
Oh, thank you.
I think, I think last time we discussed it on the board, um, I think we talked about like suggesting submitting a resume or something, but.
I am docu- I, I, for someone that don't have the document, I've had it, I, I didn't print it, right?
Very bold, second.
Any other suggestions?
There's that title that's uh under sort of the advocate for the B C P, you know, should there space in?
Where was that?
On the next to last bullet.
Oh, I see it. Okay, thank you.
And, and I guess on the, the third bullet point, there should be a space between the, the L and D and B C P L director.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this? Any more comments, corrections?
Uh, well, in that last paragraph, it says to apply. Is that what you were talking about this year?
Yeah.
Did we change that?
I thought we had talked about changing that last time.
Can we not, can we not just take out that to apply comma, just put finally completely attached form?
And then, then the, the sentence then just also says we'll review applications. I think that needs to change.
You should say like, we'll review, B O T will review information. When it succumb, when.
I almost think you don't even need it, cause like you could just, we can, we should be able to review any submitted information, basically anytime.
Take that long now?
Yeah. They're just information packets.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, we do all of this, but we must submit that information to under three. Uh, branch of service.
Yes.
So, so, so the process will, will review and then will submit that to the, to the Alcor, Marable, or Blunt County.
And really, this needs to be done a lot earlier than now, you know.
Because they, they have the opportunity to recommend.
Yes.
They have the authority to approve it.
So at, at the end of the day, they approve us.
Or reject.
Or, yeah, so they.
Look, just as a question, my understanding is that, you know, like county commissioner pick, pick one of the three. They, whether we give them anything or not, they can pick someone.
Exactly.
Regardless of what we're doing.
This is the guide to help.
Yes, well, and it gives them the information in that too, so.
I guess, I guess my, my, my question, what, when, when a um. When, when a board member comes out to the board, uh, generally the uh, the county Alcor member. Should be aware of that. And they in fact will identify who should, who. Who they do like, but what we, what you have to do is, is have a list of. But it's the combination of your, your desire and.
Yeah, I'd, I'd say, I'd say in the, this is a small thing in the interest of, you know, fostering good relations. We should almost provide this packet to those relevant bodies. So that if they come up with somebody separate from our own recommendations, they can be like, oh, can you fill this out so that we can give this to the board? And then now we have, now we have cross communication happening.
But you have cross communication, but at the end of the day, it's a legal.
Yes, yeah.
Well, like, that's a good point. Who is, Manny, are you like communicating when a term ends to the appropriate government?
So it's usually myself and the board chair. Like when Andy was board chair, we met with Greg McLean. Um, and then Stephanie and I, she got it from them.
Years ago, it was probably less interest than uh, I didn't know that in person now, there are really more interests. Should we vote on some changes or?
Sure.
Think you got all the changes.
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this with the suggested changes? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving this information sheet? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks so much. The borrowing privileges policy, uh, do I have a motion that will approve this? Motion? In a second. Okay, any discussion?
For the sake of sanity, I would take a little space thing and add that application word. For you.
Any corrections to borrowing privileges policy? All in favor? Any opposed? Uh, circulation of library materials policy. Do I have a motion to approve this? Second? Any discussion?
Summer, that's another one, I think, on the spacing on page two. You just have, I have one paragraph on my printout. This is just my printout. Okay.
It's, that's, I think it's like that in all of them.
Okay, okay. Just once, uh, and then it picks up again on page three. Okay, thank you.
All in favor? Any other suggestions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Uh, under new business.
Does that have the recirculation or the renewal? The new renewals?
Uh, confidentiality, confidentiality of library records, it's new, under new business. Um, are there any corrections? We'll vote on this next month since it's first reading.
I have a question. The last sentence on the la- um, page, first page. Says such like, uh, or as having otherwise used or been present in such library. I don't know what that means. I understand I'm tying my data research records, but. What does it mean? As having otherwise used or been present in such library.
Is that them trying to say you can't confirm if someone has been in the library?
Yeah, I mean, I don't understand what it mean, what it says.
It seems to be referring to the person itself, that person itself.
It's not part of the open record. You can't, if somebody can't request. To see if somebody has been in the library or they've checked anything out. You can't, you can't reveal what they've checked out.
Right.
And that's not part of the open record to request.
But it extends to the point that if I see any of you in the library, I'm not to go. Hey, I saw Tim in the library on Sunday, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
Library staff are not to talk about who they see in the library and what they see that person doing. It's a, it's a.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Right, and I think they are, I think it also goes to what materials, a lot of it is what, what materials. That the person's looking at, cause I think there's been problems previously with, you know, hey, did, did John Graham check out? A copy, you know, a copy of whatever. Eliminate the words such. And just say the library.
I would think you should just make it two sentences.
Yeah.
That's, it's just a long, that's a long run on sentence anyway, you might as well verify.
I don't have a copy of that, but I just wanted to ask, is that quoting the exact text of the code? Okay.
The code's not in.
Well, I mean, the confidentiality of library, of, of library records is in Tennessee code.
Yeah, it could be.
Sometimes those have very long sentences and go on, and if you quoted the exact, you know, I mean, if you quoted the exact section of the law, then that's. You wanna keep for, maintain the integrity of that quote, of course.
And then we couldn't do that or.
I have, the law actually says, um. It defines library, but then in section two, it's, this is ten eight one oh one. Um, library record means a document record or other method of storing information retained by a library that identifies a person as having requested. Or obtained specific information or materials from such library. Library record does not include not identifying material that may be retained for the purpose of studying. Or evaluating the circulation of library materials in general. And then it goes on to talk about. Um, disclosures, prohibited exceptions there.
What's the policy is like condensing some of that here.
Exactly.
Okay.
It seems like it's quote, it could be a different code, the ten seven five zero three. Is what's.
I think what she said. I want to just quote it.
Yeah, but it's quoted here.
The other. We'll look at this again next week.
Oh, uh, just sorry, one last thought. The exceptions on that second page, um, are those also referring to a specific code? But I just, I, the other, the, the whole per page identifies various codes, but the exceptions are not. Referring to where in Tennessee regs it says, or exception.
I mean.
It's a small, never hurts to have that in there too.
An eight one oh two, um, talks about disclosures. Exceptions.
So just it's a T C A reference that it wears since there.
Yeah, something like pursuant to T C A section in.
Actually, I think the ten seven five oh three is referring to these things, not to the hard lines.
Oh, you think that last five seven oh three is?
The way I read it, that's why I like to consider an exception to the provision of that.
Yeah.
You know, the, the exceptions on the next page is talking about when they can be disclosed, so that'd be the opposite, I think, isn't it?
I don't know, I don't know the energy code, that's not my, not my favorite.
You're not an attorney. It's our favorite phrase.
I tell how the T C A is always found to read.
I'm not interpreting, I'm just giving the numbers.
Any other comments or suggestions?
And that's, and actually, as I'm, as I'm looking this, this part, what's on the, what's on the back page is verbatim from ten eight one oh two.
Yes, as my phone number is not correct. Any other corrections on the?
My address isn't, but I have, I have written it. I've written it on there, so.
My email should be all.
On that sheet and just leave it with some.
Yes, that would be best. Thank you.
He's out. Anybody have any comments or? I just want to touch base on the the budget very quickly. I did have an opportunity just now to go through through every line item and show the difference between what is in our current and our fiscal. Our personnel under this proposed, what will be going to commission shows a personnel line increase of just over sixty one thousand six hundred fifty five dollars and a decrease in operation of thirty thousand seven hundred and fifty six. So the the difference of thirty one one hundred is if you add these two together, you get that.
I just feel like I'm not a good, I'm not, so it's not, thank you.
I've got just one last question and just mainly because I'm curious, what does other contracted services, what does that entail?
Other contracted services is when you can't, you don't have a rationale to make them fit into the other lines. It it really is that. So for instance, when we had the translators come, there wasn't a line item for that, so I put it in other.
Okay.
Yeah.
That that makes sense. I just, it was just, it's just one of those.
They, they being accountants and all that do not really want those lines used. It is if you can't make it fit into the other line items.
Well, Sean and I were discussing like the first twelve lines from fifty one oh one all the way down to fifty two twelve. It's not, I mean, that's all.
Personnel.
Personnel.
Yeah.
So that is stuff that we don't even need to even look at because that's set by the county.
Exactly. And and that was the the struggle that we were having is because with the new process, we had a two week turnaround to submit the operations. You can see the timestamp on the top of this. That's when we got it. And so not knowing where the questions were going, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared enough to to break it down, but we got it. We got there.
Thank you, Angelina.
Manny, I have one question. The striping of the parking lots, we talked about that a few months ago.
Did they ever get that all fixed to be able to strip?
They're still waiting to.
Dig it, dig it up.
They have to.
They had to dig something up. I think it says somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on their list. That is on their list. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I get asked that all the time. They're waiting to dig up for the learning classes and replace that.
Any other comments or questions? Our next meeting is June eighteen at five thirty. But I would like to invite everybody to come at five so we can have kind of a little reception for our two members that are up late. So we'll have, we'll have some live refreshes. June at five at our next meeting.
Well, we know how to get you here, sugar.
Okay, any anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? Okay, all in favor of this? Any opposed? Thank you all. Thank you.